So we're back in M.R. Harvard Hall after
So, back in MR Harvard Hall after a executive session. And we're now on to item number three. Can I get a motion to, which is adjournment? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Remove, Weiner.
Second, alter.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, it's seven to zero. We are on to, we're switching gears now to the City of Iowa City Works Session for May 17th, 2022. And we are going to start with our first item, which is a presentation from the local childhood, childcare coalition. So, we're gonna just welcome Jennifer.
I've brought Missy along with me too, so she's gonna be tag teaming and help me, helping me out a little bit.
Right.
I wanted to start out by talking a little bit about why the Business Partnership has gotten involved with childcare, just to sort of frame why this is such an important issue for our community. But, I, I wanted to start with talking about how many women are in the workforce. So, the state of Iowa has the highest women, percentage of women in the workforce than any other state except for Minnesota, we're tied. And of Iowa's women that are in the workforce, women of color exceed all of those numbers. So, really when we talk about childcare and we talk about removing barriers to work, this is an equity issue as well as a business issue. So, back in 2019, when I started working at the Business Partnership, I was doing some research on workforce. At the time, I think we were at 3.6% unemployment, so really low, and we're, we're back there again now. And I was trying to figure out how we could remove as many barriers to work as possible. And what I found out was that nobody at that time was really talking about childcare. And so, I reached out to the Iowa Women's Foundation, had them come in and do a session with us, a Childcare Solutions Summit, I think is what it's called. And I thought maybe 20 or 30 people would show up. The room was standing room only, it was so hot in there, it was like 70 plus people, we can't even imagine that anymore, right? We don't go to those types of closed in rooms anymore. But, it was overwhelming, the number of people that wanted to work on solutions to our childcare problems. So, that was in October of 2019. We met once for this big summit, we started, we formed some teams that we're gonna work on a few projects. And of course, as you know, when we got back together in January of 2020, that was the last time that we met as a group in person. So, we really switched gears and I, we, we started meeting every week or every other week with as many childcare providers that wanted to join us on Zoom. And it was Mondays, Megan was there, Missy was there. It was Mondays, I think at one o'clock during naptime for childcare providers. And I was calling it the Childcare Provider Support Group, you know, because childcare providers during COVID and the onset of the pandemic were really struggling with just finding basic necessities like whole milk. Our grocery stores, I, I know it seems like that's a million years ago, but that was just a few years ago that we were, you know, not able to find milk or, you know, struggling with finding PPE or finding the appropriate cleaning supplies. I mean, you can't just use any cleaning supply with an infant, you know, you have to have special stuff. So, we would meet on Mondays, I would spend the rest of that week trying to figure out the, a solution to the problems that we were coming up with. We met with elected officials like Senator Ernst when they were allocating some money for childcare and for small businesses. And so, we really built a lot of trust and camaraderie between our childcare providers, which is something that hadn't happened before. So, if there's any good that came out of the pandemic, we really started to think as a group and, and build some trust between different organizations. So, we're coming out of the pandemic, we've built some great relationships. The governor started the Childcare Task Force, which I was honored to be selected as part of that task force. And during that statewide task force, the thing that we kept hearing was workforce, 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 workforce. The childcare industry, the workforce has been underappreciated for far too long. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but I'm gonna keep my Business Partnership hat on and not my feminist hat on, but you know, the women, mostly women, that serve our childcare industry are underpaid and the profession has not been built up to be the noble profession that it really is. So, during the task force, we really hammered that hard. We wanted childcare providers to be paid more. We wanted them to be recognized as professionals and in doing so, being provided 401K and PTO, things that we all have in our, in our jobs, right? Things that they, that they don't have. So, some of the other things that we talked about in the task force were shared services. You know, every childcare center, whether it's in a home or in a large setting with 100 children, it's a business, right? And so, you have things like payroll and taxes and, you know, like I said, buying lunches and, and things like that. So, how can we provide a shared services model at the state level? So, but at the end of the day, we really, really wanted to hammer in on wages. So, state of the, state of childcare now, so I just wanna give you some background on what we're seeing post pandemic, it's not post pandemic right now, is it unfortunately? But, at this point in the pandemic, as you know, there is a shortage of workforce throughout our community and throughout the country, right? The Great Resignation, you all have heard about that. What has happened is large corporations and companies such as Target or Trader Joe's or Amana or whatever, they now are paying their workforce more, which is excellent, right? Childcare providers prior to the pandemic were making $10, $11 an hour. They can now go and work at Target, McDonald's, Walmart, wherever, for $15, $16, $17, $18 an hour with benefits, with PTO. So, what we're seeing is our childcare centers are really having to raise their, the salary of their workforce, which is excellent and we want, right? But unfortunately, childcare is a market-based solution. And so, when they raise the salary of their employees, they're raising how much it costs for their customer, the parents. So, a couple of weeks ago, I started calling childcare centers, acting like I had a, a child that I needed to put, you know, to find childcare for. And I was asking how much, how, how much are you charging? One childcare center that I called was $500 a week for a newborn. If you can find a newborn spot, it's $500 a week. So, just think about that and kind of go back to some of those numbers that I was talking about before, we have a lot of women in the workforce, how are they gonna make that, how are they gonna make that work? So, I know personally, my children are raised now, but I had a three-year-old and a newborn in childcare, I would not be working today, even on my salary today. So, just to put that into perspective. So, going back to, you know, being able to pay our workforce more, I think one of the, the frustrations that came out of this legislative session, which also is not over yet, but one of the things that we really wanted them to address was childcare assistance reimbursement rates. The reimbursement rate on that $500 a week child spot at that center here in Johnson County would only be reimbursed a fraction. I think it's $175 a week for a newborn, is that right? Okay, somewhere around that number. So, they're only getting a fraction of what a full rate child would be paying. Why would you take CCA if you can make $500 a week as opposed to $175 a week? If you're running a business, again, I go back to, I, every childcare provider is in the business because they love children, but you also are running a business and you're trying to pay your employees. So, it's, it is really bleak out there for all parents, it's especially, especially bleak for low wage earning parents. So, it's not all doom and gloom. The governor did put aside a very large chunk of money to provide retention bonuses for childcare workers. That is a $1,000 retention bonus. Johnson County allocated $750,000 over the next, I think, three or four years for retention bonuses. So, we're really working, chipping away at trying to pay our childcare workforce a little bit more. It's just a drop in the bucket, they, to me, they should all be making $100,000 a year, but it's a drop in the bucket and it's getting us to a point where hopefully folks can be compensated a little bit more fairly. So, during the summer, July of 2021, we all got back together, the coalition, again foolishly thinking that the pandemic was over. And we wanted to talk about the state of childcare as it is at that time and what things we could start working on. And we really identified, again, workforce, we wanted to build a pipeline of childcare workers. We, we started a program with Iowa City School Districts and Kirkwood Community College to put together a high school academy, CDA Academy, so that is in the works and they'll have their first cohort in the fall of next year, next school year. We have been working with Kirkwood on some ELL programming for childcare providers and, and some other things that I think Missy will go into more detail about. But, again, going back to, we're building this pipeline of, of employees or people that can work in the workforce, but what ends up happening is after they get all of their credentialing, the school district takes them because they've got all the credentialing they need to be a parent educator. And again, going back to, why wouldn't you work in the school district where you're gonna make more money and get, you know, that 401K and the, the PTO and all of that? So, we really need to, we're building that pipeline, but we really do need to professionalize this profession and really, you know, acknowledge that 85% of cognitive development happens before a child enters a school building at age five. So, trying to really crack that nut and, and address that issue. So, I guess I, I'm here to talk a little bit about some solutions. It's, like I said, we have some wage supplements in the form of retention bonuses. But, we do have a few other things that are really exciting, that are happening within the coalition that Missy's gonna talk about, that we'd like to talk with you about and see if you would be willing to support, support us in those endeavors, so.
Thank you.
Welcome, Missy.
For having me. One of the programs that 4CE's operates is a, a project called Starting Strong. And what that is, is we work very closely with low-income individuals who are interested in being in home childcare providers. We provide them with, we call them incentives, so it's, it's things to just enhance their early, early learning environment, to make sure that it's educationally appropriate. We help them out with early literacy, early STEM, and just that play as a form of learning and things like that. In, within this, that program, the providers that we work with, we require them to take at least 50% of their children on childcare assistance. One of the things that we've found is that not only are these people of color, but also the refugee and immigrant population. A lot of them work, live in rentals and their programs can be limited by how mu, how many children their landlord says they can take. So, we are evolving that program to have like a pilot project, I guess you wanna call it, for those providers that have already done their pre-service training that, that we've helped them through. And if their program isn't going to be viable in their home, we've partnered with, or we are in talks anyway, partnering with Lionheart, who is a childcare center in, in Johnson County or in Iowa City, that, and they're struggling with workforce. So, that is kind of an offshoot of the Starting Strong Program that we've, we've started investigating what, what that partnership looks like with Lionheart and possibly with other centers, because we want those, people that are interested in, in working in the, in the childcare industry to have a, a good knowledge and a good working knowledge of what it is to work in a center and be, and be well-trained so that we've got a good workforce as well. One of the programs that Jennifer mentioned is called through Kirkwood, an Earn and Learn Program. And that is the Kirkwood students that are enrolled in their ELL classes, if they're interested in becoming a childcare, working in the field of childcare, they can go through this Earn and Learn Program where they will get all of their pre-service training that is required by DHS for them to work in a center. That will be, there, there will be translation if there are language barriers, and then they will be partnered with a center where the centers will take them on as an employee and match them up with a mentor in the classroom so that they can be working alongside their learning. Not only are they gonna be doing their pre-service training, but they'll also be learning some culturally appropriate ways of caring for kids that we do in America that they may not do in their, in their home culture. We're really excited about that project and it can also go both ways. So, if you have a staff person working in your center that you think, you know, could do, have some benefit of an ELL class, you can, you can recommend them to go through that program as well, and then they'll also get that other training that they need and things like that. That, there's an informational session with Kirkwood coming up this week, and I think that the timeline is to start that sometime this summer with the first cohort graduating in August. So, we're really excited about that. So, those two, I think, programs will really complement one another. 4CE's also works very closely with the refugee and immigrant population, and we actually get funding through CDBG to help with technical support with those, with those programs in the Starting Strong Program. But, the one thing that I wanted to point out about that is that, and I've completely lost my train of thought, one of the things that we feel is very important though is engaging that part of the community into our community and setting them up for success. And so, one of the things that we would also like to do to make that, make our programming a bit more robust is to figure out a way that we can recruit more, more, more people within those neighborhoods that where there are childcare deserts. And also identifying individuals that are interested in doing this so that families can take their kids to a neighborhood program. Again, just making that more, making those individuals living in those neighborhoods feel more connected to their neighborhood and to their community. We also would like to help them market their programs and, and really feel comfortable not just taking kids within their culture, but that may be able to expand their programming
We're, we just, we're all doing this kind of as a part of our job, right? So we could really use some funds to hire a navigator that could go out and spread the word and really pull this thing, pull this thing off. The, the next thing I wanted to just mention is we, although we do have funding for the retention bonuses, it is still really important to provide some funding to encourage people to go into this field and to stay into, in this field. So although there are a lot of dollars being allocated to that, those dollars will quickly run out and it would be nice to be able to continue and just continues to support childcare providers with a wage supplement. And then lastly, I will also mention, and I, I'm not sure how far along it is. I, I reached out to the county on this, but the county is building a childcare center over across the way from the administration building. Those white cinder block buildings that are over there, those will come down. And there is an affordable housing project going in there with childcare on the first floor. So I know that the city is, is committed to helping with that. But I just wanted to re, you know, articulate that that project will be just a fantastic project close to Kirkwood Community College so students can be working in that facility. It's in an area that doesn't have a lot of childcare and it could also provide county and city employees with childcare that's really close by as well. So just wanted to mention those three options to you. Questions?
I have a question about, to what extent are you, have, I mean, I've said it on some of the meetings, but I haven't been able to come to all. But to what extent are you working also with the school district? Because I know the school district's looking at a variety of things, including they're piloting pre-K with wraparound care at, at two schools this year, trying to figure out how to, how to make that, how to eventually fund that and, and grow it and work with childcare centers and providers to get, so, so it's a, it's sort of, it's a, it's a big topic because providers get a lot more money for, basically, they sort of earn their money by, with older kids because they don't have to have that, because the ratios are much higher. And a lot of those kids get sort of taken out and, and, I mean, in, in pre-K with, with sort of, how are you looking at that piece?
Yeah, so that, again, this is an onion of a problem. We're going to have to come at it from a lot of different angles. And so Lisa Williams is on, is part of the coalition. She was actually the one that, you know, really helped get the CDA Academy launched within the school district. And she has invited me to a few conversations now with the school district about what that would look like. Obviously, yes, childcare providers really need those, those preschoolers to make back some of the money that they lose on younger kids. So we're trying to find a, a fit for everyone. And the school district really can't take on every three and four-year-old in the community anyway. They just don't have the physical infrastructure for that. So there will be some sort of combined effort for four-year-olds and potentially three-year-olds.
Is anyone looking at bringing, at sort of having the school district be the official, the hiring arm so that they can get into some of the school district pension systems or?
Yeah, there are some conversations where they would send a school district teacher into a facility and that person would be paid for to travel to that. I don't, there are no finalized solutions yet, but like everything has been discussed, yeah, for sure.
You had mentioned one of the things, a navigator, a full-time position of a navigator. Would that be, is that something you've been talking about with other entities? Do you have in, in your mind some sort of a model of what that would look like and how that would be funded? And what their territory would be?
So 4CE's, I think, is a natural fit for that employee. We have really good relationships, not only with the providers in Johnson County specifically, but we also have really great relationships with other organizations. We partner with the Catherine McCauley Center in Cedar Rapids. We do their refugee program in Johnson County, as well as tight connections with neighborhood centers of Johnson County and UAY and, and all of those other organizations. It, it seems to be a natural fit also because while there are other organizations that contract with DHS, we're, we feel like we're the grassroots boots on the ground, can pivot really quickly. We, we were able to do that in the pandemic, definitely. And don't, aren't tied to some of the bureaucracy that other larger organizations, state organizations have to do. So this makes it sound like I go rogue, which I might. But anyway, so it just, it seems that 4CE's would be a natural fit for that, especially given the different things that we have our hands in. Not just Starting Strong, we've got a lot of different irons in the fire, so to speak, so. And then I'm, what, I know you had another question in there.
Well, I just, I mean, have you approached like, because you'd mentioned funding being a part of that. So obviously we're one entity. I don't know, you know, do you have an idea clearly what that would look like? And are we, would you be looking for a couple of entities to partner to underwrite?
Sure, so I have, I proposed a program to someone at the county who is looking into what specifically they would do with their ARPA money that is tied to, or allocated for childcare. I have a request in, for a grant request into the Iowa Women's Foundation also for this position. Then the City of North Liberty has just released their RFP. And then I would do an ask in Corvus as well, so we could cover the whole county. I think that when I look at the allocation that the county has given towards childcare, I think it's around 25%. And my ask to the county, city council here would be, could you match that percentage? And not necessarily all for this program, but for childcare, kind of mirroring what the county has, has given thought to and pointed as some, some initiatives that they feel are important, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just sort of stress one of the things that you said, Jennifer, which is this is 85% of cognitive development happens before kids get into school. This is really part of the education continuum. If we want, if we want equity, if we want to help everyone across the spectrum sort of start school, public school on an even footing, this, figuring out this, this childcare thing is, is essential.
Yeah, I often say, you know, what we're talking about is access to affordable, high-quality childcare, which provides stability for both the child and the parent and the business employer. But it also is creating a healthy, strong neighborhood where children are, you know, really receiving what they need to, you know, succeed later in life and whatever that looks like, so.
I appreciate you pointing that out, Janice, because in a board meeting not too long ago, we, we hear a lot about workforce and workforce shortage and things like that. And we forget that that is really, we want to impact the child as well. And so when I talk about what 4CE's does, it is about leveling the playing field. So thank you for bringing that up again, because that's what we're looking for. Every child in Iowa City and Johnson County having that first foot into kindergarten, ready to go.
Yeah, I think of the, that term, the child is father to the man. And there's a remarkable documentary called Seven Up. I don't know if you've ever seen that, where this, it's set in England. It's a documentary where they look at kids on a seven-year basis. And the first couple of, you know, so the first episode is at seven. And then as you see that child over, that, that person's, you know, 14, 21, 28. The personality is established at the age of seven. It, it really is astonishing to see how quickly a person's being is formed. And yet we do seem to have sort of inverted the importance of early childhood, as if it's just a, a very little significance. Yeah, this is a fascinating area and it with great potential, but it's very concerning how it's, you know, gaining traction with it. But I really appreciate what you're doing.
I have one more quick question, which is are there any businesses or larger businesses in the area that are contributing or are giving their employees stipends or one way or the other, helping out?
There are a few businesses that are contributing. This is an area that I have really struggled with, trying to gain more business support. Obviously, that's the other half of my job with this, is going out and talking to businesses about it and getting their support. What I hear back is, you know, I make toothbrushes, I don't provide childcare. You know, this is not my core competency, not my area of expertise. Find me a solution and I will support it. But I don't want to try to figure out how to provide childcare within my business because it's just not part of my core competency. And then also remember that over 80% of our employers are small businesses. So, you know, at the Business Partnership, the majority, a third of our members are nonprofits. And so, you know, we're talking about really small employers. And we've just come off of two really tough years. And so this just seems like, kind of like something that just keeps getting pushed to the back. And so that's why we've really tried to step up and provide some options for business owners to get engaged and find some ways that, that they can engage in this work that seems doable for them, so.
Well, thanks to both of you, really appreciate it. All right, we are going to move on to the next agenda item, which is clarification of agenda items. Here are nothing. We will go on to information packet, May 5th.
I had a question about IP4, which was the Historic Preservation Commission memo on the Montgomery Douglas, or Montgomery Butler House. And it kind of goes along with IP8 in that same packet, which was the, their committee minutes from April 14th, talking about forming some type of investigative working group to figure out what to do with this house. I mean, it's, we've, the city's had control of it for some time and it's just kind of sitting there and it's kind of, from what I, what sounds like and what looks like kind of a gem of, in the history of Iowa City. So I, I don't know, Jeff, if you can say, what do we need to do as a council? Just say, yeah, go for it, you know, because they were going to open it up to the committee or the committee members, HPC and Parks and Rec, as well as community members? Do we need to do anything as a council on that?
Yeah, I think you, you would have to direct that action. Staff has looked at it and we actually provided quite a bit of information to the Historic Preservation Commission and, and the Parks Commission about the current condition of the house. I would say that it doesn't look like much of a gem right now. You know, it was mothballed to a minimal degree back when it was, you know, acquired 15-plus years ago. Really has not been invested in since, and it certainly shows that. It's, it's not a pretty sight right now. I, I think, you know, in this case, staff from multiple departments looked at it and we don't see an obvious use for this property. We've, we've struggled with it over the years to think about what it could be. Could it be a trail amenity? Is it just a historic marker or asset? We, frankly, we really don't see a viable use going forward for it. And we think that we probably would need to make the tough decision to, to tear it down and memorialize it in some way on the site. I know that's not going to be the popular opinion with Historic Preservation Commission. But that's frankly where, where your staff is right now. We can form a committee. We can invite members of the Parks and Rec Commission and Historic Preservation Commission to join that and kind of go through an exploration process. I think what council needs to understand is it's, that's a significant undertaking. It's a significant undertaking in time for a staff that, that already has a number of significant items to undertake, you know, on our to-do list. So if this is, if this is one of those top priorities for you, we absolutely can do it. And we can come back to you with a report on, on where we think this property could go. It's also, you'd have to expect going to be a pretty darn expensive project. And I can't really give you a range, but this isn't something that just needs a little minimal investment. Just to get it back to a secure state is going to be a hefty investment. You know, coming off the, I think the closest example we can really give to this would be our recent efforts with the, with the Upper City Park cabins. And we had to put several hundred thousand dollars into those just to maintain them. Those frankly, at least at this point, aren't getting programmed the way that we thought they may after we rehabbed them. Hopefully that changes. Hopefully we can still find some uses and the community can find some uses there. But if you want to move to preservation without a particular end use in sight, you're still going to be investing hundreds of thousands of dollars and it's not very accessible. That's one of the challenges with the site. You know, many of you have probably been to Waterworks Park and absent this memo, probably never knew this house even existed there. So it's not like it's, it's on the trail sections or in an easy, easy accessible site. So that's a pretty long answer. The answer, of course, is yes, we can do this as, as requested. I think you just have to understand what those trade-offs are because this is a, this would be a significant undertaking.
Thank you.
Any other May 5th info packet item?
I think with our strategic planning tomorrow, one of the things that was helpful to frame up future growth and opportunities was IP3, which relates to the analysis of residential development, particularly focusing on the year. But I found the historical, going back many years and just seeing that we are very, very low in all kinds of residential dwelling development. So just, I think, important for us to kind of keep that framing in mind and, yeah, hope that everybody's looked at that. And if you haven't, maybe you do by tomorrow.
May 12th info packet?
IP5, I appreciated the Fire Department annual report. It certainly shows that they're not sitting around just polishing their boots. They've been very busy. Each of the departments have been busy and even helping surrounding communities. I was hoping the chief would be here, but I think Jeff maybe remembers. We had a presentation a while back about the average response time. And in this report, it mentioned six minutes, 28 seconds. And if I recall, they were pretty, they were lower than or right at the national average for that response time. So I commend them on that and think that's really great. And I actually just had firsthand experience with them last night, really late, 11:30 last night. A friend fell in her driveway and I tried to help her to get up. And after about 20 minutes of trying, no effort on her part or my part, decided to call 911 and not knowing what would happen. And the dispatcher was very pleasant and said it would just be a few minutes. And sure, I didn't time it, but it was a pretty quick response. And the three that responded were familiar with this person because she's fallen before and she lives very close to, I believe, Station Number Three, so very quick response. But they were, I'll just commend them publicly, they were just very professional. They stayed and, and helped her get into her power chair and into her house, made sure she was in her house safely. And then they left, but they were very polite, very kind and very professional. And I was, I was impressed. And it was a very quick response, which was, which was good. And it wasn't a life-threatening response. She, she, you know, had no injuries that I could tell, but just needed some help getting up off of the ground. So firsthand experience there, that's very, very true. Kind of along with that then was IP7, was the 150th Anniversary Celebration, kind of along with some other things that are going on. But that's exciting, 150 years is a long time. So no, no wonder they do the job so well, they've been doing it a long time, so that's it.
I appreciate that. Real, real quick, Chief Lyon has a Johnson County Mutual Aid Association meeting tonight, which is why he couldn't, couldn't be here. But I'll make sure and pass along those comments, thank you. Along with the 150th, I think, I'll follow up with you offline, but we'd like to offer an opportunity for the council to, to tour the stations, particularly as we get ready to invest in two new stations down the road. So look, look out for that. I think we thought the 150th was good context to invite you into the firehouses and, and let you see and meet some of the folks. you see, and meet some of the folks and see the facilities.
I'll just mention IP6, the, the letter, which was from Lynn McGuire in the Northside neighborhood. It too, maybe something like the residential development memo to keep in mind tomorrow when we have our strategic planning exercise.
Great. All right. We are going to move on to the University of Iowa Student Government with their updates. And we have the new leadership here with us today, so. Yes, please welcome and introduce yourselves.
Hi, Council. Yeah, it's a very exciting day. So as you mentioned, Yoshi is beginning our summer session and with that, working with the new cabinet. So we hope to continue to coordinate and bring some more cabinet members throughout the summer. But first off, let me introduce you, or let Keaton introduce himself.
Hi, I'm a second-year student at the College of Liberal Arts and Sciences. I'm studying political science. And as the deputy city liaison, I want to focus on sustainability initiatives and look forward to working with the council to make the city and campus a better environment. And then for an announcement, the daily, on the Daily Island, so we had the Spring 2022, that class has graduated. And it was the first spring graduation held on, in Carver since 2019. So that's a big accomplishment.
That's our only announcements tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thanks to both of you and welcome to council meeting for the first time. Well, I don't know if it's your first time, but welcome to council meetings. Yes. All right. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Seem like it's been a quiet two weeks. All right. Anything else for now? Here nothing. We are adjourned until 6:00 PM.
Yeah, see, I wish I'd have done that, so just. It's just like the first.
Right.
It is now six P M. And I want to welcome everyone to your Iowa City City Council meeting here in City Hall. It is May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and we're going to start with a roll call, please.
Alter?
Here.
Bergus?
Here.
Harmsen?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Teague?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Weiner?
Here.
All right. Well, I hope everyone is enjoying the warm weather, not so hot, not so cold. We're going to start with item number two, which is proclamations. The first one is National Gun Awareness Day. Whereas every day, more than a hundred and ten Americans are killed by gun violence, alongside more than two hundred who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than sixteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Iowa has an average of three hundred and two gun deaths every year, with a rate of nine point four deaths per one hundred thousand people, and has the forty-second highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID- nineteen pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than two years of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January two thousand and thirteen, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at the age of fifteen. And on June third, two thousand and twenty-two, to recognize her twenty-fifth birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya Pendleton, other victims of gun violence, and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolized the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June third, the first Friday of June in two thousand and twenty-two, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June third, two thousand and twenty-two, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support this, their community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and to honor and value human life. And accepting this proclamation is Karen Greenleaf and Temple Hyatt, on behalf of Moms Demands Action.
Thank you to Mayor Teague and the council for this proclamation. My name's Temple Hyatt, and I'm a volunteer with Johnson County Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm a veteran, and I became a gun violence survivor when my nephew died by gun suicide. Gun violence has increased when COVID- nineteen pandemic struck, and those impacts continue to devastate our communities. Two thousand and twenty-one was the deadliest, was one of the deadliest years on record for the United States, with an estimated twenty thousand seven hundred people killed in gun homicides or non-suicide-related shootings, a six percent increase over two thousand and twenty. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the heinous act of hate in Buffalo, New York. I spent two hours on a call this afternoon with fellow coworkers all across the country, and they expressed sentiments of fear, disheartenedness, they were saddened, they were broken, some of them felt numb, felt a deep heaviness, some were paranoid, exhausted, and some just aren't surprised. Here in Iowa, black people are sixteen times more likely than white people to die by gun violence. To our BIPOC community, to our black leaders, we see you, we love you. And I'm sorry that our country empowers white supremacy with easy access to guns. But as incidents of gun violence have grown, so too has the movement to stop it. We continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, advocate, and rally for safer communities. This year, we invite the community to our Wear Orange event on Saturday, June fourth, at two P M. at Weatherby Park. There'll be speakers, kids' activities, and an opportunity to place a remembrance rock in the Edible Gardens. We'll conclude with a peace walk through the neighborhood, past the mural on Broadway, and into the diversity market at Pepperwood Plaza. Together, we'll work to make this country safe for everyone, from intimate partner violence to police violence, gun suicides, gun homicides, and unintentional shootings. We demand a bold plan that must address it all. Together, we can and we must build a future free from gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Item two B is National Police Week. Item 2B is National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John Kennedy set aside this week to pay tribute to the law enforcement officers of this nation and to memorialize those who had fallen in the line of duty. And whereas the police officers and their support staff in Iowa City work with courage and dedication to enforce the laws fairly, to reduce crime and violence, and in general, to improve the quality of life for everyone in this community. And whereas the dedicated officers who have chosen law enforcement as a career often face unknown or extraordinary risks and dangers in preserving our freedom and security. And whereas these individuals are parents, siblings, children, and so we give gratitude to their families for supporting them in their career. And whereas officers of the Iowa City Police Department play a growing role as ones who promote harmony and mutual respect among community members in an increasingly diverse population. Whereas as we wish to give everyone an opportunity to appreciate and thank the officers and support staff of the Iowa City Police Department who dedicate their lives to public service. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, to be National Police Week in Iowa City and urge all community members to participate fully in this observance and further extend appreciation to our Police Chief Dustin Liston and the officers of the Iowa City Police Department and to all law enforcement for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they serve. And to receive this is our very own Police Chief Dustin Liston.
Dustin Liston, Iowa City Chief of Police. I first want to acknowledge Moms Demand Action for all the hard work you do. I'm honored, I'm honored to be here when they're here. I think it's pretty appropriate. I'd also like to thank the mayor and city council for your acknowledgement of National Police Week. I also want to personally acknowledge the officers of the Iowa City Police Department for the hard work they do. We've got a couple of them with us here today. Thank you for being here. The last two years have been exceedingly challenging for the entire country, but it's been specifically hard for law enforcement. COVID-19 and the social unrest surrounding the murder of George Floyd have put an enormous strain on law enforcement. And while many in the country were able to stay home and work remotely, men and women in law enforcement were not able to do that. So unfortunately, that didn't come without a cost. Since this pandemic began, over 600 law enforcement officers have lost their lives because of COVID alone. So we need to really acknowledge the sacrifice that has been made during the pandemic. I hope the community has noticed the positive changes we've, the Iowa City Police Department have implemented to rebuild trust. With the guidance of the city manager's preliminary plan to accelerate community policing, we are well on our way to building a better relationship with the entire community as we continue to uphold the high standards that Iowa City has come to expect. So thank you for the acknowledgement.
Thank you. All right, we are on to items number three through seven, which is our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve our consent calendar items three through seven, please?
Sound move, Taylor.
Second, Thomas.
All right, would anyone from the public like to address any item that is on our consent agenda? If so, please step to the podium, and there is a sign-in sheet that you can sign. And we also have stickers that people can pre-sign and place in the basket at the podium. Welcome.
Welcome to you, City Council. Thank you for all that you do. My name is Brandon Ross from Iowa City. It's good that we have talk about violence. There's been some bad things going on nationally.
I want to make sure that you're speaking to something that's on, that's on the consent calendar.
Oh, I thought you said.
We'll come back to public comment.
Oh, I thought you said public. So did he. Sorry about that.
Yes, yep, yep.
We did the same thing last time.
Yes.
This is a routine, by the way. We worked this up.
Yes, yes. Anyone else want to address an item that is on the consent calendar? Seeing no one, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number eight is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for folks to come up and speak about anything that is not on the council agenda. Three minutes will be provided to each speaker. And there's a timer down there, so keep watch on it. We will end our time today at 7:00 PM, the latest. And also, I ask that you keep your comments directed to the council. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Every time I come up here, you should tell me it's the wrong item. First of all, the gun violence issue is, has been drawn to our international violence issue. Madea Benjamin of Code Pink has often said that our international policy also reflects our domestic policy and that we tend not to negotiate, we tend to shoot. For some reason, we are taught to do that. She would also encourage negotiations instead of conflicts militarily, and she has in places like Iraq or Iran, Afghanistan, Libya, Yemen, Somalia, Ethiopia, Syria, and other such places where people are starving from warfare. They're starving, they're hungry, they're refugees. And right now, Ukraine would be the same situation instead of, instead of militarizing it, sending $40 billion worth of weaponry, which we pay for from our taxes, voted for by all Democrats, three-quarters of Republicans in Congress. I believe that we should be negotiating and not sending those weapons and that everybody here is responsible to communicate with President Biden, our senators, and our congressmen to encourage, I believe, negotiations which would help Ukrainian people not die in swaths because half the people dying are with US military weaponry going through NATO and also prevent the horrible situation of a nuclear war. And I think we are on the brink right now, and we want to support people in Ukraine, but we want to support everybody. I do believe that it's a very complex situation with a long history. The Ukrainian crisis has been going on at least since 2018, 2014, excuse me, eight years. And not all players, you know, in Ukraine are good players, not all players in Russia are bad players, not all players in the US and NATO are good players. You know, Ukraine was found by international Jewish organization to be the most anti-Semitic in Eastern Europe in 2018 study. Also, high incidence of violence against Roma people and LGBTQ people. There's a lot of rough stuff that is in Ukraine. At any rate, I hope that all of you will use your telephones, your typewriters, and please tell your congresspeople and President Biden to stop and negotiate.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city.
Hello, I'm Angie Jordan. I'm Iowa City, Iowa. All right, I'm going to stick to my script. Dear City Councilors, City Staff, and Public Listening, on behalf of the team I'm on as part of the Kearns and West Proposal for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, we, Angie Jordan, V. Fix Morais, and Annie Tucker, want to share publicly that we have paused. We've paused on moving forward with the current proposal due to concerns we have as a team regarding specifically the current budget. We want to remain local community members engaged through the TRC's effort to bring truth and reconciliation to our community. And at this time, within this pause, we are continuing to come around our roles we want to play in the process that brings more local entities and partners together around a shared vision to ensure lasting healing and lasting healing practices in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address? Anna, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Roy Sanport of Iowa City. To City Council from the Black Voices Project, May 17, 2022. The Iowa City City Council created a Truth and Reconciliation Commission in fall 2020 and gave it a charge of fact-finding, truth-telling, and reconciliation. We are now approaching the summer of 2022, and in the last 18 months, this commission has yet to engage in any of this work. We lay these months of false starts and ill-conceived budgets directly at the feet of the city council. You created this commission and selected volunteers to serve on it. You offered no structure or guidance for their work. You did nothing in the face of their clear floundering, misdirection, and misunderstanding of the charge you gave them. Even when some members initially felt empowered to rewrite their charge, you sat in silence. When we spoke to you in March of 2021, we noted what's your step, that the lack of direction from the council resulted in a significant misunderstanding about the funding available to the commission. Your Resolution 20-228 to create the commission clearly states that the city allocated funds for the Resolution 20-159, initial commitments addressing the Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism in the wake of the murder of George Floyd by the Minneapolis Police and calls for action from protesters and residents, which includes a variety of initiatives, among them the truth and reconciliation. And yet, here we are 14 months later, looking at a proposed budget even higher than the one you previously rejected. We were shocked to see the latest budget proposal from the TRC still enlisting an out-of-state company to facilitate the work, given that the council has already rejected a budget based on this firm's work. We acknowledge that the new budget incorporates local community members into their plans, but we continue to question the exorbitant sum directed to the external firm. Our taxpayer dollars should not be lying in the pockets of high-priced consultants when we have members of our community who are prepared to offer their expertise and leadership. Our membership has deep roots in the Iowa City area and can say with confidence that an out-of-state firm will not be able to learn, to earn the trust needed to engage the community in this work. And if they aren't doing the boots-on-the-ground work, they shouldn't be collecting the paycheck. We have many local community members, black and white, who have relationships with each other and deep ties to the community who will be trusted to lead the work of fact-finding, truth-telling, and reconciliation. It is no wonder that the commission has yet to produce any work or community engagement. You did this. You set them up to fail. We call on you to admit, to admit your own missteps and apologize to the commissioners for your lack of leadership. We further call on you to return to the drafting table and reconstitute a commission charged with fact-finding, truth-telling, and reconciliation with an emphasis on local voices and leadership.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Dan Cobble, and I'm from Iowa City. I would just like to first say publicly thank the members of the TRC for all the hard work that they've done. And anybody who's been paying attention knows that they've been engaging with the community and working at their butts off to make the community a better place. And any shortcomings that they have for folks who've been paying attention are directly attributable to the city council not helping them. As for comments about an out-of-state organization that they want to come and help, we're talking about a world-renowned organization that will help make our community a great place. Now, regarding the Iowa City Police Department, earlier tonight, the city council recognized National Police Week. And the members of the city council like to think that they're very progressive. Y'all aren't. I'm just going to say that. Because on the one hand, you talk about, oh, we're making Iowa City a welcoming place. On the other, you enable the police to abuse children, mentally disabled folks, and talking about how great our police department is, and the chief was talking about all the improvements that they've made. Where Iowa City Police are no different than they were before 2020. Anybody who's been paying attention is aware of that, whether it's arresting a child with, who's differently abled for touching a traffic cone or beating suspects up and being captured on videotape doing so. Iowa City Police have not made the change. Furthermore, the city council continues to enable them. This is evident from the way you all don't even move a finger with the way that the police department uses armored vehicles to just other issues regarding their personnel and also, more specifically, the CPRB. Now, recently, you were, you were voting for people to be on the CPRB, and several candidates, most notably Yasmina Salih, were rejected by the council because they expressed abolitionist beliefs. Now, that's very interesting to me, given that the same council and the same people who explicitly rejected Yasmina for abolitionist beliefs were also enthusiastically saying, hey, we should have former officers on ICPD on this board. I mean, anybody who pays attention to the functionings of CPRBs knows the presence of former officers, especially officers who have been within that same department, hinders the functioning of CPRBs. Now, I mean, I just hope that the council does what it takes to help protect the community from ICPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Noah, as y'all know. So to three of y'all that did respond to my emails, I will get back to you. I've been in a deep depressive state, so it's not, not really been mentally capable of responding, but I will respond to you shortly. To the four of you, John, Laura, Pauline, Janice, you didn't bother to answer my email, and that's really disrespectful. And you get mad at me if I come in here and break your rules, but you can't even talk to me outside of meetings. Make it make sense. You can't make it make sense. To Jeff and Redman, do y'all just like not, well, I know you don't, why don't you respond to emails yourselves? Just showing your whole ass. And to the comments that you, your proclamation that you started to me up with thanking ICPD for, I don't know what, harassing the homeless community, arresting homeless community, demonizing homeless communities. That's what ICPD does. They don't help them. I mean, I talked to officers, they just say that. There's very disturbing stuff about them. I say that they don't want help or whatever, like, as if like that's, just saying like people, I just, ICPD does not know how to interact with the homeless community at all, and they don't view them. I understand you, they're not here anymore. Oh, well. It's just like, like you said, like, y'all like to call yourself progressives, but you fully support the cops that gas people in the street and harass and the homeless community and assault everyone else, not everyone, but lots of other people. It's just really insulting that you, that you would do that. And the chief, to when he accepted your proclamation, saying that the struggles, ICPD has struggled because of the George Floyd uprising. When ICPD was the ones that gas and attacked protesters that were nonviolently standing in the street, and nothing's been done to fix the culture in the department since then. I mean, when people ask, when I ask for videos of complaints, the city lies about what state code does and doesn't allow to be disclosed. I'm not really sure what else to say, so I'm just going to end with this. I'm not really sure what else to say, so I'm just going to end with this. Fuck ICPD.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address an item that is not on the agenda? Welcome.
Thanks for welcoming me. Phil Ricks, I'm in Iowa City. And I was wanting to speak today about some talk that's going... I live on the north side neighborhood, and there's some talk going on about whether or not to keep the one ways or get rid of the one ways. And I just want to put my support behind retaining the one ways as they are. There is a questionnaire being sent around. I think the questionnaire is a little bit biased in favor of removing the two ways. I think that questionnaire could have been written a little bit better. But I think, just in general, living on Dodge Street is pretty tricky because we have... we're a highway exit, and it's a one-way. And so, there's certain sections of the town that have alleys and certain sections that do not. If you live on Dodge Street and don't have an alleyway like I do, it can take a while to get out in the morning. But if I were dealing with two-way traffic, it would take arguably twice as long, potentially even longer, if I'm looking at traffic going two ways, you know, when there's a gap in one way, then maybe there isn't a gap in the other way. I don't think it's super inconvenient to live on one ways. I don't think it's hard. The questionnaire compares it to navigating a maze, which is hyperbolic at best. I mean, if anything, what we need are some street signs that say "wrong way" for the people that are going the wrong way. I notice it, because, you know, I've been living there for almost 10 years now. I mostly notice people going the wrong way. It's like game days, weekends, things like that, you know, it's out-of-towners and stuff. So if we can make our signage clearer, I think it'll be a lot easier for people to get around. And I think, you know, especially when you think about north of Brown Street on Dodge there, most of the folks there are lower-income and also don't have alleyways. So the idea that we're going to, you know, change them to both is just going to make it really inconvenient for everybody who doesn't, you know, live on an alleyway already. Of course, if you do, you know, you can get in and out. You can kind of pull in your driveway, turn around. But for me, I always have to back out just one way. I don't really mind it. What I would mind is having it take more than twice as long to get out. So, nothing earth-shattering here about, you know, nuclear war, or all the various other problems that we have nationally and internationally, just a guy living on a street trying to keep it that one way. So, thank you for taking the time. I know it's not the most significant thing, but I also know it's something that is really within your grasp. So, I wanted to at least put that out there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm going to have you sign in right there, please.
I already did.
Oh, you did. Awesome.
Twice. I didn't...
Great, thank you.
Put it on the sticker and no mistakes.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on our agenda? Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you all. So, dear city councillors, city staff, and community members, Angie Jordan and V. Fixmer Orais and I came together to approach the TRC about the possibility of using circles for healing as part of the truth and reconciliation process. And we provided some circles for folks who were involved in the community, and some of the TRC members, and some of the BVP members. And people found them... People came out and felt like they were calmer. They connected with people that they'd known for a few years and different levels. So that was a worthwhile experiment. In the meantime, with the help of TRC Commissioner Sekawis, we've been in contact with three Native American folks who are willing to work on this process, within the TRC process, to provide something that is consistent with Indigenous practices that Iowa City community members can benefit from. So we're really looking forward at that possibility. And as Angie said earlier, we've recently put our work with Kearns and West on pause. We have some concerns about their budget, and we are consulting. So, we're going to continue to work to encourage local organizations and community members to be involved in the truth and reconciliation process, so that the important local work can be done, the hearing of the truths of our community members, and the healing that is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address a topic that is not on the council agenda?
Mayor, we do have one online.
I don't see a hand raised. Oh, let me see something here. Is there a hand raised? Okay.
Taylor Khan.
Welcome, Taylor.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I just wanted to point out, in light of your police proclamation, that in a couple of weeks, on June 3, it will have been exactly two years since your police department attacked a group of protesters who were protesting for racial justice in your community. And we've seen, by, you know, by today's proclamation and other things, that you never intended to make good on anything you said after that event happened. You always intended to hold off the unrest in the city until you could ignore it again. And so I just want to speak to anyone listening in the community, and just point out that nothing has changed in Iowa City's police department. And Iowa City's police department is not better than the Minneapolis Police Department. I currently live in Minneapolis, and I was really disgusted to hear the chief invoke the name of George Floyd. If you talk to people here, especially black people here, they are absolutely sick of people invoking that man's name in bad faith to reform the system, to preserve the system, to protect the system that killed him. It is disgusting. And another thing you'll hear if you talk to people here is that all cops are Derek Chauvin. The problem in the Minneapolis Police Department was not one cop. It was the entire system, and it was the city that supported it, and it was the nonprofits that supported it. There is an entire system here, and there is a similar one in Iowa City. You recently fired an officer who violently assaulted someone. I apologize. In the video of that man's arrest, you saw other officers standing by and letting it happen. And that is the problem. It is not just one officer. You cannot solve this problem by just getting rid of the one who got caught. They all support the system. They are all violent. So I would just ask, because I know that it's wasting breath to talk to you, the city council, I'm just asking the community to keep that in mind. And, yeah, I'm really, as always, disgusted with Iowa City on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Or address an item that is not on our agenda? C and O1, I'm going to close the community comment. We're going to move on to item number nine, which is planning and zoning matters. 9A, zoning code amendment, private utilities in P1 zones. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, zoning code to allow private basic utilities uses in P1 zones, to standardize the public zone section, and to amend basic utility approval criteria. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome Kurt Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner in Development Services. Tonight, we're talking about the zoning code amendment to allow private utilities in P1 zones. So, just to give some background, I wanted to start by talking about P1 zones and basic utility uses, and then work up from there. So, the P1 zone is the neighborhood public zone. That is the zone that is used by the city, the county, the school district, and typically it's used to show local public ownership and public use of land. So, even though that's its primary use, that's been its historical use, it does allow some private uses, either provisionally, which is by staff review, or by special exception, which is by the review of the Board of Adjustment. Now, basic utility uses are allowed in P1 zones if they are publicly owned, but it does not allow them if they are privately owned. And basic utility uses, to take a step back, are public or private infrastructure services that must be near the area where the service is provided. So, like I said, public utilities are allowed in public zones, but private utilities are not. They are also allowed in most other non-residential zones, again, either provisionally or by special exception. So depending on which zone you're in, there are some different criteria, so I just wanted to briefly touch on those as well. So, the more restrictive one is in most commercial zones, in research park zones, in RFC, and some interim development zones. They are allowed provisionally, so again, without Board of Adjustment review, if they're enclosed in a building, that also contains another use allowed in the zone. So if it's a standalone use, you can't use that provisional permit. Similarly, water and sewer pumps or lift stations are also allowed provisionally if they're approved through a separate process, like site plan review or subdivision review. Now, if you have either an unenclosed use or a use that doesn't have another use that's allowed in the zone within the building, then it requires a special exception in those zones. That requires some additional standards, including screening, including compatibility with adjacent uses, and it has to meet general approval criteria that all special exceptions must meet. So, it's pretty general stuff, things like consistency with a comprehensive plan, things like effects on neighboring properties, utilities, all of that sort of stuff. Now, industrial zones also allow basic utility uses, and they're a bit more generous in their standards. So they are provisionally allowed if you're 200 feet from a residential zone, and you have some screening. If you can't meet that standard, you require a special exception using the same standards as commercial zones. But generally, it's a more permissive way of doing things. When it comes to public zones, there are no standards that are associated with them for public uses. But what we are proposing is to allow private basic utility uses in the public zone, similarly to as they're allowed in a commercial zone. So that would require, if it's enclosed, it would be allowed provisionally. If it's unenclosed, it would require a special exception review by the Board of Adjustment. There are also some additional standards that are being modified through the proposed amendment, and a lot of them are kind of code cleanup, because the public zone is unusual and that it's focused on ownership rather than on use. So, one of the standards that it's proposing to revise is to strike the standard requiring an enclosed utility to have another use allowed in the zone within that same building. So what we've seen, the picture there is an Iman utility hub. What we see is that often you have an enclosed use. It's relatively small. It doesn't have much of an impact, but it requires a special exception because it's a standalone utility use as a private utility. And so what we're looking at doing is striking that provision, which would allow administrative review of enclosed utilities within those zones. And you would instead rely on the existing standards that guide all uses in that zone, seeing as an enclosed use is very similar to any other use that you would have in the zone. And then finally, it does harmonize some changes to the public zone section that try to bring it more in line with other zone sections. So that includes adding a use table, which the public zone does not have, because it's unique. It adjusts the language regarding purpose and public ownership. And then it also, with some of these changes, tries to move the public zone to be more aligned with other zones that you see in our zoning code with a use-based form rather than an ownership-based form. In terms of the analysis staff conducted to come to these conclusions, to review the impacts, what you see before you is a map included in the staff packet. The red zones are commercial and research zones, which are the more restrictive zones that allow basic utility uses. The purple zones are those industrial zones, which are a bit more permissive, but they still allow basic utility uses. And if you look at the map, you'll see that there are large areas of the city that don't allow basic utility uses, including all residential zones. The map also shows P1 zones in blue, and so you'll see that those are a bit better dispersed throughout the city. And that's one of the reasons why staff is recommending this change, is because there are gaps within our current system, which is especially noticeable in developing areas, especially to the south, the southwest, the east. And it can really become a problem when you're expanding infrastructure into those areas, and there aren't commercial zones that are prepared for that. So the P1 zone would be added to that, as you see in this map, which would provide better geographic distribution, in addition to some other benefits. We also looked at what other cities are doing with regards to how they regulate utilities. Des Moines and Cedar Rapids do allow basic... or allow utility uses in all zones, either as a permitted use, if it's a minor utility, or with a conditional approval, which requires Board of Adjustment approval. But that's in all zones. And Davenport administers it differently, where private and public utilities are actually exempt from zoning, and they follow a different process to permit it through the city engineer. So that one's a little different. But typically, what you see in other cities is the higher level of impacts, the more standards that come into play, the more review that you have, like the Board of Adjustment. So it's somewhat similar to what we do with enclosed and unenclosed, but they distinguish between minor and major utilities. But because they can allow basic utility uses in all zones, it does avoid some of those issues that we face with gaps in our current zoning where it's not allowed. So, some of the reasons that we want to do this, like I said, it opens up those additional areas for basic utility uses, and it uses standards similar to the commercial zones. The staff doesn't anticipate any substantial impacts from this. But there's also an additional benefit, that when you have a new area that's being brought into the city, if you need to accommodate basic utility uses, you would have to zone it commercial currently, which may not be compatible with surrounding land uses, especially if that use moves in the future. So, the proposed amendment would allow that to be zoned public instead, which, if that moved in the future, is a much more restrictive zone than what would be allowed. So it would avoid some of those conflicts that might arise otherwise. But that's one of the additional benefits. In terms of its consistency with the comprehensive plan, many of the goals are broad. They're focused on growth and infrastructure, less so on the specific placement of basic utilities. But really, what they're prioritizing is investment in areas that are best served by current and planned infrastructure, with really the goal of having high levels of service at the most efficient cost possible. So most of the strategies in the comp plan that are related to utilities are along those lines, including focusing on infill, focusing on contiguous development. And with the proposed amendment, it does improve coordination of public and private utilities, and that private utilities would be allowed on public land potentially, or in a public zone. And it does also provide greater flexibility in placing those services, so that you can make sure that they end up in the place that has the most efficient services, the highest level of service at the most efficient costs. So in terms of next step, should the proposed amendment be approved? If a private utility wanted to use this amendment in an existing zone, it would require either staff review if it's enclosed within a building. If it's not enclosed within a building, it would require review by the Board of Adjustment. And then there would also still be your typical staff reviews, like site plan review and building permit review at later stages as the developments progress. So based on review of this criteria and the anticipated impacts, the proposed change, staff does recommend the proposed change to the zoning code text. And at its April 20 meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of seven to zero, concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended the approved change. We did get some public comment as part of that P and Z meeting. Mid-American Energy actually came and spoke, and they had some slight revisions to the language that they wanted to see. But ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't believe that that language was necessary to achieve the goals. And with that, that concludes my presentation for this. So if you have any questions about the proposed amendment, I'm happy to answer them.
Is there ever land that is zoned P1 that isn't owned by the city?
Yeah, so land owned by the county or school district are also zoned P1. Typically, you do not see private ownership, except in some cases, such as private communications transmission facilities are allowed in P1 zones. I think most of those are zoned commercial, but they can be P1. Agricultural uses are also allowed, as are solar utilities, utility-scale solar, excuse me.
Thank you.
With that being the case, did you discuss this with the school district and the county?
This was not discussed with the school district and county.
But it's possible that these utility facilities may be located on their properties?
If they opened up their land to utilities, it could be allowed, yes.
Only with their permission.
Mm-hmm.
I have questions related to, since this is for private... This is a private company, we don't know who, that want to come and do something. Is there a price associated with that, and can you speak to that?
Sure. So it would be the same as the use of any public land, so it would come before council, and I think Eric might be able to speak a bit better to that.
Right. Again, to kind of echo Jeff's point, this would only be with the permission of the property owner, be it the city, the county, the school district, the university. They would be free to negotiate whatever price they want, much like we in the past have negotiated cellphone tower antennas on top of our parking ramps, that kind of thing. And if the... And if the public entity does not wish for the private utility to be present, they can just say no and be done.
Great. I think you're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If so, please come forth to the podium. I can't see anyone online. Okay, great. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration?
So move, Thomas.
Second, Weiner.
And council discussion.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it does seem we just don't have enough lands available for these facilities. And so the best distributed lands we have in the city would be the public lands to kind of fill in those gaps. And then I think as we just heard staff note, it's with the permission only anyway. So it does seem there's controls on the distribution in that way as well.
All right. Roll call, please.
Bergus?
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 9B is zoning code amendment, drinking establishments. Ordinance to amend Title 14 zoning regarding drinking establishments. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to invite Kirk Layman back again.
Thanks. Still Kirk Layman, Associate Planner, Development Services. This time talking about drinking establishments. So to start, I'd like to just take a step back since this started in 2009, when the city established its 500-foot minimum separation distance between drinking establishments within the city. The purpose of that was to combat an overconcentration of these uses downtown, which also can lead to alcohol overconsumption, underage drinking, and nuisances. And so the goal was really to crack down on some of those activities that we saw. However, in 2013, the city restricted that a little bit more, so it wasn't citywide. Instead, it was just focused on the university impact area and the riverfront crossings area that you can see in your map there. The change was mostly due to economic impacts that were unexpected in businesses in the outside, and those areas weren't really where we were seeing the biggest problems. And so really focusing down the standards to where those problems were the greatest. Now, if there was an existing drinking establishment, it is allowed to continue until the use lapses and the liquor license is discontinued for the period of a year. It also does restrict expansions of these non-conforming drinking establishments, except for specifically listed circumstances in the code. For example, rooftop cafes were allowed in 2015, sidewalk cafes are allowed and not called an expansion. There are some expansions to kitchens that you can do, for example. So there are some expansions, but they're very limited in what can be expanded. Last year, the city again adjusted this slightly for the Tailwinds Project, which was downtown on the Ped Mall, it's part of a historic preservation project, and adjacent residential tower. So that amendment changed it so that a non-conforming drinking establishment may continue if there hasn't been an economically viable business substitute within that building, and it has to be in a local historic building. So it is a very specific standard that was made to enable this project to move forward with a reunion brewery that's proposed for a certain space in the building. And so this proposed amendment is a continuation of that Tailwinds Project, and specifically, it's looking at 1111 East College Street and 115 East College Street. So 111 is where that proposed reunion brewery is downtown. That is allowed to move forward, but what they're asking is for a door into the adjacent space to the east, which is going to be a sales-oriented retail use with merchandise, for example. And typically, a door like that would be considered an expansion. So this proposed amendment would allow that to move forward with a door between the two spaces. And just to give you a better idea, because it's hard to describe with words, you can see the map up there, the duly blocked building to the west, and the Sears Building, the 1929 Sears Building, are the two where the reunion brewery is currently planned. The duly blocked building to the east, highlighted in red dashed lines, that is the proposed sales use, and so there would be a door between that proposed reunion brewery and the proposed sales next door. So the amendment itself makes a couple different changes. The first is which excludes a door between a drinking establishment and a sales-oriented retail use from being classified as an expansion. So like I said, normally, that would be considered an expansion. In this case, it would be excluded from that. And then second, it establishes some criteria about what would be required for that to be exempt from being an expansion. So first, the door must be ADA compliant and match the same fire-resistant rating as the wall. Second, a notice must be posted for patrons that they cannot carry their, any alcoholic beverage into the adjacent building. And then third, the owner must provide staff to monitor that. And if there are repeated violations of open container laws, then the fire, or, excuse me, the chief of police may permanently close that door. So again, as you can tell, this is a very narrowly focused amendment, and sales-oriented retail uses are not allowed to have a liquor license for on-premises consumption. So there is no way for someone to work around that and try to make it so that you can have people carrying alcohol into the store. That being said, alcohol may be sold at that store as an accessory alcohol sales, as long as it's less than 25% of the total sales, and that's only for off-site consumption. So there is possible to have alcohol at that store, they would have a liquor license, but it wouldn't be for onsite consumption. And then again, I wanted to reiterate that the police chief does have authority to close that door if there are violations. So in terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, the plan does encourage the retention and expansion of businesses in Iowa City, and it seeks to attract businesses that have growth potential. It also encourages new businesses in the core of Iowa City, and all of these goals, staff believes, are being furthered by the proposed amendment. So in terms of next steps, then, if the zoning amendment is adopted, then it would go to building permit review and also liquor licensing review, which are both staff processes. So based on a review of relevant criteria and the anticipated impacts of the proposed change, staff recommended the proposed changes to the zoning code text. And at its April 20 meeting, by a vote of six to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and also recommended approval. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and happy to answer any questions.
So I'm assuming there's no current establishment that has a similar setup in the city of Iowa City? Or, and I'm referring to the entire city?
Are you referring to a non-conforming drinking establishment or to one with a door into a sales-oriented retail?
Yes, the latter.
No, not that we're aware of, or at least not within the 500-foot rule where that would not be allowed. So university impact area, riverfront crossings.
So really, the zoning, actually, just to go full circle, this zoning is very specific to a particular area because it has that 500.
That is correct.
And while you called this, this is, it's pretty narrow, narrowly focused, but I'm thinking of, and this is going to date me, but something like Hard Rock could come in, have their restaurant, and then, I mean, this is something that other places could take advantage of, potentially, right? If somebody came in and wanted to open a bar, right, but then have like all their merchandise and stuff, they could come in conceivably and do that within this impacted area.
So within this area, you would not be able to have a new business established unless it was replacing an existing non-conforming drinking establishment?
Okay.
So conceivably, an existing non-conforming drinking establishment could have a door into an adjacent sales-oriented retail.
But those actual opportunities are fairly limited, is what you're saying, because of the non-conforming?
That is correct.
Just not that many of them.
And drinking establishments, I didn't mention this, but drinking establishments are any eating or drinking establishment that has a liquor license for onsite consumption and is open past midnight. So you could also have a restaurant that does this, that closes at midnight, and that would not be a drinking establishment. Those establishments would be exempt from this. So if it closed at midnight, it is conceivable that that could happen, but that could happen now anyway.
All right. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one online or in person. I want to just get head nods from council if they're inclined to vote with this before I close the, all right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
So move, Taylor.
Second, Alter.
All right, council discussion.
Just, I mean, I presume this is going to go forward, it's just sort of odd to create ordinances that are aimed specifically at one business. It's like they're almost like your little special interest ordinance. I have nothing against reunion brewery, nothing, it's just sort of, when we're thinking about general policies, that there's something that just rubs me the wrong way about doing like the ordinances that are really only for one specific business. I understand why it's happening still.
If I may add, it is, I mean, I think you have the right feeling. I often tell people the 500-foot rule is a very imperfect solution to a very complex problem. And unfortunately, in my view, at least, in Iowa, cities don't have much control over liquor licenses. So we had a situation in the 2000s in which the overconsumption kind of atmosphere that we had was creating all kind of negative externalities downtown and really forcing other businesses out, retail, office, and causing a problem. And ideally, the simplest thing to do is be able to regulate liquor licenses, and for those businesses contributing to the problem in some way, shape, or form, you revoke that liquor license, you suspend it, you correct that activity. We can't do that. We really struggled with that historically, as all cities do. And so you start to look to imperfect solutions, which is the 500-foot rule. And it's just a tool that has worked okay for us, but we occasionally have find where, I would say, I would argue, some common sense fixes like this, you know, and in this case, you're just creating retail space for, I don't think that goes against the intent of the 500-foot rule. You know, we found success by doing the rooftop solution as well, and cafe solution. So sometimes you have to get that scalpel out and say, yes, this makes sense, and it'll be good for the overall downtown. But it is a bit awkward, and I would expect that we might continue to, you know, to look at these minor changes as we work in a downtown that has a lot of old buildings that don't have a lot of flexibility. You sometimes have to get a little bit more creative on the code side to accommodate new ideas.
That context is very helpful. Thank you.
And I think this does a nice job of maintaining the whole purpose behind, of the 500 separation and helping increase retail downtown. So that seems, jumps out at me as some real positives for this proposal.
All right. Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Bergus?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item number 9C is preliminary plat and sensitive areas, Plan of Sand Hill Estates, Part 5. Resolution approving the preliminary plat and sensitive areas, Plan of the Sand Hill Estates, Part 5 subdivision, Iowa City, Iowa. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So move, Weiner.
Second, Bergus.
All right, and we're going to invite Kirk back up.
Thank you, Mayor. Kirk Layman, Associate Planner, Development Services. We are talking about Sand Hill Estates, Part 5, which was a preliminary plat submitted by Hall &amp; Hall Engineers on behalf of Prairie Heights Land LLC. The area is southwest of Park and east of Covered Wagon Drive, as you can see in the map here. And it is an 8.88 acre subdivision with 18 residential lots and one outlot for stormwater management. So this is a continuation of the Sand Hill Estates subdivision, which was originally approved in 2004, which includes land to the southwest and to the northwest. It was a pretty large area, 379 lots, approximately 120 acres, and it was rezoned to OPD RS5. So it was part of a planned development overlay. The most recent subdivision, it has been subdivided several times since then, we're obviously on Part 5 now. The most recent subdivision was completed in 2016, so it's been an ongoing process as this neighborhood has developed. The current preliminary plats, or, excuse me, Sand Hill Estates required that planned development overlay due to sensitive features that were on the site. So there is a need for conservation, cluster design, and 17.4 acres of open space were dedicated to the city, which is now called Sand Prairie Park, as part of that process. The OPD also allowed some narrower lots, which allowed the protection of that, while still allowing development of the area. With that 2004 zoning ordinance, there was also a conditional zoning agreement. It has four conditions, I'll get into those a bit later, but there's only one that still applies to this subdivision. So you can see the actual plat on your screen right now, with the 18 lots and single outlot. So preliminary plats are reviewed by three general criteria, the first of which is consistency with the comprehensive plan. That includes the South District Plan, of which this is a part. So the comprehensive plan shows this area as being two to eight dwelling units an acre, and it encourages an interconnected system of open space with wide sidewalks and trails. It also includes compact and connected neighborhoods and safe pedestrian-friendly streets. Now, the South District Plan, that was, it's a part of the comprehensive plan, it was recently updated in 2021, and with amendments to incorporate form-based land use districts, that shows this area as being transect three neighborhood edge. And so you'll notice that they're still using their existing RS5 zoning, they are not using the form-based standards or the form-based zones for their development, primarily because this is a continuation of an existing neighborhood, so they're using the existing zoning of the rest of that neighborhood. The RS5 is roughly proportional to what you see in terms of allowed uses in a T3 neighborhood edge zone, but staff does anticipate that future development in the area will comply with those form-based future land use categories. So generally, the preliminary plat is consistent with the current zoning, and it does also incorporate some other aspects that you see in the plan, such as sidewalk and street connections that encourage connectivity and pedestrian-friendly streets and support other goals. Now, moving on, conditional zoning agreement is that second criteria by which we review preliminary plats. So in this case, we're looking at the 2004 conditional zoning agreement that was approved. There are four conditions. The first has already been addressed, which is adding a left turn lane to the southbound South Gilbert Street, so that has already been built. The second two are related to specific lots within the subdivision. Those are in a different part, and they're related to design criteria and to narrower lots requiring alley access, and that was part of what allowed the preservation of that prairie. Those don't apply to this preliminary plat, however. And so that leaves one, which is that for lots less than 60 feet in width, without alley access, they need a 25-foot front setback. So based on that, the preliminary plat does meet the applicable required conditions. And then finally, when we talk about preliminary plats, you know, there are a number of things that we like to discuss, things such as streets in circulation, sidewalks, blocks, and lots. This proposal does extend two streets, Covered Wagon Drive and Sand Prairie Drive, and it includes stubs for future connectivity. Where they join, there's a traffic roundabout, which is for traffic calming in the future. And it also creates a frontier loop off of Sand Prairie Drive on the east side of the preliminary plat. And that's the area where you see those lots that are less than 60 feet, so they require the wider setback. As far as sidewalks, we see five-foot sidewalks being extended from existing stubs, and they stub out at the end of the subdivision, in addition to an eight-foot sidewalk that extends along the north side of Covered Wagon Drive. So all of these provide opportunities for future connectivity, and the block lengths that we see are right in the city's sweet spot that we aim for, which is around 300 to 600 feet. Terms of open space, that was satisfied as part of that 17-acre Sand Prairie Park that has already been dedicated to the city. So when that was dedicated, it provides enough open space for all future Sand Hill Estate development. In terms of utilities and infrastructure, it's an easy In terms of utilities and infrastructure, it's an easy location where it can, can be provided and extended with sanitary sewer tap fees and water main extension fees being collected in final plating. And then finally, for stormwater, there's one outlot, Outlot A, which is provided for the purpose of a retention basin, and that's been reviewed by Public Works. So the preliminary plat does satisfy all those necessary subdivision and zoning standards that you see. And I did want to touch on that preliminary plat, because it's a bit of an, or, excuse me, on the outlot, because it's a bit of an unusual situation. So the, the Outlot A does contain some sensitive features, including some wetlands and some hydrolic soils, but the city code in Section 145I2C4 does exempt areas within man-made stormwater management facilities. So these sensitive features are not actually subject to our sensitive areas ordinance, which allowed the development to, to move forward as proposed. There was also an archaeological study that was conducted in 2002. That one ended with a finding that, that no additional work was needed on the site. So in terms of next steps, as you can see, it's been a process, starting with that 2004 preliminary plat and subsequent plats that have occurred with the most recent in 2016. Should this be approved, then a final plat would come back to you in the future for approval, and then there would be a final sensitive areas development plan and site plan that would be reviewed by staff. And then finally, building permits would also be reviewed by staff. So based on a review of the relative, or relevant criteria and subdivision codes, staff does recommend approval without conditions. And at their May 4 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion by a vote of six to zero. The applicant did hold a Good Neighbor Meeting on April 12, and got some feedback that way. That concludes staff's presentation, and I believe that the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions for Kirk?
I just have one. On that, that condition you mentioned with the, I think the lot with less than 60 feet require a 25-foot setback, and the reason for that is what?
I believe that you typically see those on the bulb of cul-de-sacs, and we have similar standards like that in our zoning codes. So I imagine that because this was 2004, just before the, the current zoning code was adopted, I imagine that that was incorporated to reflect the standards that we anticipated adopting.
So what, I'm just trying to understand, is there some practical reason for that 25 feet? Does that have to do with off-street parking, or?
I would believe that it has to do with lot frontage, making sure that you have adequate space for a house.
Okay. Oh, I see.
And the further setback, wider it is on the bulb of cul-de-sac, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't know if the developer, if the applicants have any comments, or?
I have any questions.
Okay. Any questions, councilors? All right, here and now, thank you for being here. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? So the attendees aren't coming up, let me know if there's a hand raised. Okay. And council discussion, no one from the public wants to speak?
It, it's nice to see this proposal, especially earlier, we saw the, the data that showed very concerning significant drop in development of single-family residences in, in the area. So it's, it's great to see that the plan is for 18 residential homes. And considering the surrounding areas, I, I know some people that live in the Covered Wagon area, it, they're, they're nice family homes. They're not high-end, which I think we've seen a lot of that development, which I don't personally think we need that many more of those. We, we always talk about affordable housing, and this will be affordable, probably to, to middle-income folks. It's still not to the bar of where we'd like lower-income folks to be able to afford these homes. But, but still, it'll be, they'll be comfortable homes and add to our residential properties in the city, so I'm, I'm in favor of it.
I wanted to thank Kirk. I appreciate your presentation, going through all the line items that we, we have to comply with. It was a very thorough presentation, thank you. And I'll be supporting it, although I must say, I'm looking forward to some form-based code applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will say, the, the applicant also owns a significant amount of property to the north and to the west surrounding Wetherby Park, and we're working very closely with them as they, you're going to have to take a step back and master plan in their own way with the form-based code. So we're, we're excited to be working with them on the next phase, and I think when that comes forward, I think the community and the council will be excited, too.
And thank you, Kirk, for the showing kind of how it fit in with the transect that was noted in the, in the form-based code. That was helpful to see.
All right, I think we're ready for roll call.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item number 10 is Fiscal 2022 Budget Amendment Public Hearing. Resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 2022. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to welcome Jaclyn.
Welcome.
Hello, Jaclyn Feigl, Assistant Finance Director in the Finance Department, talking about the third and final budget amendment for FY22. Just kind of an overview of the budget process. The FY22 budget was originally approved in March of 2021. The year runs from July 1st to June 30th. Previous amendments were in September of 2021 and then March of '22. City policy currently allows for amendments for emergent situations, transfers from contingencies, expenditures with offsetting revenues or fund balance, and then carryover or prior to your budget authority. Can amend anytime other than the last 30 days of the fiscal year, so once we get into June, cannot do any more amendments. And the city typically averages three amendments a year, so this is the third and final. This amendment consists of amendments to capital improvement plan projects, emergency-type repairs, the transfer of the tailwinds, affordable housing fee in lieu of to reimburse the general fund for purchase of the South District duplexes, a receipt of a bequest, and then other small amendment items. On the revenue side, in the state form, you see under miscellaneous is the bequest and then donation, and then transfers in is the 1.5 million of the transfer of the fee in lieu of. The other hand of expenditures by the state program levels, government capital projects is the CIP amendments and engineering, consisting of engineering remodel, library railing, and then a catio. And then the other side of the transfer in, that 1.5 million, and then the business-type expenditures are amendments to, for a water main, Clinton to church, spiral heat exchange repair, and then landfill bird assessment. The overall total impact to the fund balance is a decrease of over $400,000. It's covered through excess fund balances and bonds, and will not affect property tax levies. Any questions, y'all have for me?
I'm just really intrigued by the bequest. The bequest, was that allocated for a specific purpose, or just to the city generally?
So I'm not sure if it was for a specific purpose, but it was for the, to the animal shelter, and they are using it to help fund the construction of their catio, along with a matching donation from the foundation.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? And let me know if anyone is online that want to speak. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved, Fergus.
Second, Weiner.
All right, council discussion.
So I probably should have asked, but I'm sort of, and it's not going to change anything, but I wonder, what's a landfill bird assessment?
We've had some complaints from neighboring property owners about birds at the landfill, which you might imagine my birds might congregate at a landfill, but, but neighboring property owners have had concerns about the impact on their property. So the, the DNR, the State Department of Natural Resource, required us to do a bird assessment, which is basically to bring in a expert that can help us identify the extent of the issue and, and any solutions that may be required to help mitigate some of those, some of those challenges.
Thanks, that's a question.
The joys of owning a landfill, we could, we could go for hours on it.
Yes.
I hope it's sort of a root cause thing, as opposed to just...
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds.
Not getting rid of the birds.
Yeah, no, exactly. And, and there's so many variables, I mean, migratory patterns, you know, may change seasonally, and that could be, it could just be, it was a, a different year in terms of migratory patterns, because it's not something that, that has been a recurring issue year after year. It was a fairly new challenge for us.
All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 11, utility rate, public hearing resolution. Ordinance amending Title III entitled Finance Taxation and Fees. Chapter IV entitled Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Bonds, Fines, and Penalties. Article V entitled Solid Waste Disposal. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Fergus. Second, Alter.
Council discussion, let's go to public discussion first. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your hand. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public discussion and council discussion. Roll call, please.
Thomas.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Fergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed, a seven to zero. Item 12 is council appointments. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific requirements, unless specific qualifications are stated. 12A is Airport Commission, and we'll probably discuss all of the appointments together today.
Sure.
No, it's too many.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, I think we'll go...
Maybe we could do all the historic preservation together.
Yeah, we'll do that one, yeah, we'll do that together, yes. So we'll do, we'll start with Airport Commission. And there is two vacancies to fill a four-year term, July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. And this has a female or gender balance requirement.
And a nun.
One female, one nun.
And a nun, yes.
Well, we happen to have, two of the applicants are our current members, and both of them, I always look at the attendance records, and both of them have excellent record of attendance. So I would move to, to reappoint Warren Bishop and Judy Foel.
I agree.
I agree with those.
I mean, the other person who is, who could really bring something to it, I think, was Ryan Story. I would definitely agree with, with reappointing Judy, because I think she filled a partial, she, she filled the position partway, partway through, so she hasn't, hasn't yet served a full term.
I think we've, in the past, tried to share opportunities with other people in the community if they've served a full term. We do know the Airport Commission, there's a few commissions that are a little specialized, and, you know, in, in my opinion, that may have a little more technical needs. And reading through the, you know, application, I, I think I could agree with Ryan Story as being appointed.
He was one who stood up to me as well, and I was thinking along the same lines that I know that, actually, we had a really robust kind of pool of applicants for several commissions, but it did seem to me that, kind of in the spirit of how commissions have done before, that to, to kind of share the opportunities. So I would be perfectly fine with Gerald as well, but if we're thinking along, or, I'm sorry.
You were thinking Warren.
Yes, I apologize.
So Ryan, Ryan, sorry.
Yeah, anyway, I'm going to stop speaking, but I just, but no, I'm fine with Warren again, but if we want to kind of share the wealth, then I would also recommend, I would recommend Ryan.
I, I agree with that. I mean, he's a commercial pilot, but I also think that it is important also for just continuance on, on a board or commission to have that knowledge base that, that Mr. Bishop has with that. I, I believe we got a letter saying that Ryan would be, if we don't select the other two, that he would be good. So I think, you know, keeping him for further consideration when openings come up again, I think he would probably, he's young and going to be in the community, he'd probably still be interested in, in serving.
So I do hear three and, I hear three for Ryan so far, and two for Warren?
I, I supported Warren and Judy.
Okay.
I did as well.
So I hear a three and a three for...
I can switch, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I think I agree with Paul Lee's take. I think it, it's great to have this problem, to have some really good candidates, but it does make some sense for the continuity, and again, the way commissions work, we periodically have somebody, so, you know, openings pop up, and so I think, you know, hopefully, they're listening, or, or will be watching this, and that Ryan will keep their application in, you know, for that. I think that would be reasonable to me as well.
All right, any other comments on this? We will appoint Warren Bishop, reappoint Warren, Warren Bishop and Judy Foel to the Airport Commission. All right, we're going to move on to the...
Need to vote on that?
Oh, well, we can just, we can do it all at one time.
Do it in bulk.
Yeah, that's fine, if you wanted, if we need to vote at some point, but if you, yeah.
We'll do it all at one time. All right. We're going to move on to Item 12B, which is Board of Appeals. This is one vacant sitter fill a five-year term, January 1, 2022, through December 31, 2026. And this is a non-gender balance requirement, and we only had one applicant.
Right, for a building design professional.
Oh.
For a building design professional, I presume an architect qualifies.
I believe it said after three months, that doesn't, that doesn't apply. Is that true with this, as well as gender balance? That it can be anyone?
I want to say with, with the specialized, it's either a building, building design professional or with some experience. Eric?
Yeah, it says a building design professional or a qualified trade representative with experience and training. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, thank you.
And Thomas?
I would think an architect qualifies.
Macanary, right, right.
Sold.
Although it, the balance is odd, one female, three males currently, so I'd love to see a female, but we didn't have female applicants, so, and they, they need someone, so I, I would say, I'm fine with Thomas.
I agree.
And nods, nods ahead of the majority, so we will appoint Thomas McLareney for the Board of Appeals, build and design professional. We're going to move on to a few that we may, well, we can take them all one by one still, even here. So we'll do 12C Historic Preservation Commission at Large, and this one...
Mayor, and if I can point out, the other, Brown Street and Summit Street each just have one applicant, that are both females, so.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so we may have some challenges there. We won't have enough, we don't have enough applicants for the openings.
For the Jefferson Street, but...
Well, for the, for the three that we have, we have one for at-large, I mean, we have some for at-large, one for Brown Street, and one for Summit.
I was looking at that two, Mayor, with the, with the two, Brown Street and Summit Street, that we only had one applicant, but again, those are fairly specialized, and I thought both applicant, I mean, I was impressed with both applications, so.
Okay.
So normally I kind of would do that, even with our last one that had that specialized. Normally one applicant doesn't scream, make a decision with just one applicant, but some of the circumstances here, and in this case, I was, you know, I was also really impressed with their applications, so.
Awesome.
So I would be comfortable with those, with those, on those two.
All right. We'll talk about 12C, which is going to be Historic Preservation Commission at Large. And so, says they're all female, we have to appoint a female.
I mean, I would be fine, would be fine with either, based on their applications, with either Laura Ralph or Jordan Selagren, who's the incumbent, both are females, both seem to have a reasonable amount of either interest or expertise. I don't know if we want to reappoint or we want to have somebody new, and in which case we wanted somebody new, then we could be looking at Laura Ralph, for example.
And not to complicate, but I thought that Talitha also had a pretty strong application.
That was.
And I would, I would definitely, I would also, so in my mind, Jordan Selagren and Talitha jumped out at me, so some overlap there if that's helpful.
Right, I don't, I mean, and the other thing that I look at, and I don't know to the extent that people are really paying, still pay attention, but some of these applications are year old. And the last two are pretty, one was brand new. The Ralph and Selagren application was brand new, the others are from June 21 and July 21.
I can respect that logic that they're old and, but the city clerk does send out emails to each individual letting them know that we're going to be voting. This is going to be coming before council, so individuals have that opportunity to say, remove my name if they're not interested. So I do think we should, you know, at least for our conversation, treat them as if they're interested.
I like Talitha as well.
Yeah. And if we learn that they're not, which we have in the past, you know, that has been a long time they didn't notice the email, we've had to revote. I am a little partial to always looking at new voices and new opportunities. So Talitha speaks to me, but I can go wherever people want to go with either of the ones that's been suggested so far.
Yeah, I like Talitha and Jordan Selagren. Those were the two that jumped out at me.
I like newness, I also like continuity. Jordan, Jordan was my preference.
I also like Jordan. As I said before, I always look at the attendance and she had excellent attendance. I don't think she'd missed a meeting and I think that shows dedication and that would be good to have her continue on there for the at-large position.
All right. It sounds like we have majority for Jordan Selagren for the Historic Preservation Commission at Large. We are moving on to item number 12D, which is the Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street. Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street has one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
I think we should go with the one applicant.
Christina Willough Reynolds. And she lives on Brown Street, so.
I was really thrilled to see Chris Willough Reynolds apply for this position. She's very passionate about the neighborhood, about historic preservation, but she also has experience doing renovations, so she understands that game as well.
All right. Majority for Christina Willough Reynolds for Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street. And then we're moving on to item number 12E. It's Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street. Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street has one vacancy to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. And again, we have one applicant.
Also seems well qualified.
And lives on Summit Street, right.
All right.
Bea Neweva is how she said, she pronounced her name.
How was that?
Bea Neweva.
Bea Neweva. All right. So Nicole Villa Neweva will be, has majority support for Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street. Moving on to 12F, Housing Community and Development Commission. Housing Community and Development Commission, three vacancies to fill a three-year term, July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
One female, one male, one nun.
Yeah, we have three positions, one female, one male, and one nun.
I'll just throw out, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I was just going to start throwing out names.
Before we do that, I have to make mention that Tanya Moore should have not been in our packet because she's over one year. We will find out why the name wasn't removed from the system, so we cannot consider Tanya Moore.
I was just going to suggest Mary Ann Dennis, Jennifer Haley, and Zachary Slocum.
Those three people that I had.
My list as well.
So Mary Ann Dennis, Zachary Slocum, and which was your?
Jennifer Haley.
Jennifer Haley.
Okay. I'm seeing majority for those three. And we have our balance according to the requirements. So based on what she said, we will make that appointment for the Housing and Community Development Commission. We are on to 12G, which is the Library Board of Trustees. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30, 2027. And this has one female, I'm sorry, just one male.
I would throw out John Rayburn, or, sorry, put him into the ring, not throw out, opposite. I would throw out, I'm just going to start over. I think that John Rayburn would be an excellent choice.
I like John Rayburn. I liked what he said, that libraries are a jewel in the city's crown. I like that, so I think he would be good, although it's tough, there were good applicants.
It was real tough and I'll tell you, as commensurate with the city of literature and considering the attacks that libraries are on and under in this state, the fact that we had a pool of people ready to step into that position, I mean, that speaks, I think, really well of our community.
I would agree.
The other person that I was very interested in is Daniel Smith.
I like them both, too.
I liked him, too.
Who has a lot of excellent training in library science and so forth.
So far, I've heard John and Daniel.
I think those are the only two men.
Yep. So then, I think I've heard three for John so far.
Go John.
And I can support John. So we have a majority for John Rayburn for the Library Trust of.
I would encourage Daniel Smith to keep his hat in the ring and keep an eye on openings. He would also be very good.
Yes. So for the Library Board of Trustees, we will appoint Daniel Smith.
No, John Rayburn.
Oh.
Sorry. I confused you. I confused you, I'm sorry.
No, I just heard you say the name. John Rayburn. All right, we are on to 12H is Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. And this has no gender requirement. I have to tell you again that Doug Butrow, application is over a year old, so we cannot consider that.
Then I'd suggest Maggie Elliott.
She'd also fill an unexpired term and I like what she said about it being actually a really, a really positive learning experience, learning is sort of on the top.
Appreciated that she not only learned from her commissioners, but followed up on these applications with counsel comment.
I agree.
And I can support Maggie. It sounds like we have majority support for Maggie Elliott for the Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, we are, we're there.
My teacher's.
I think I got it. I think I have it.
Okay.
Oh, you have it?
I just want to make sure that someone was going to make a motion for those, maybe that's what you were about to read, Mr. Mayor, in a second, in a vote. Okay, great.
Yes, so, can I get a motion to appoint, now this is where you have to check me, Warren Bishop, Judith Foel, Ryan Story to the Airport Commission.
No, there's only had two.
Just two.
Warren Bishop and Judy Foel.
Right.
Oh, yes. Warren Bishop and Judith Foel to the Airport Commission. For the Board of Appeals, Build and Design Professional, Thomas Maclareney to the Historic Preservation, to the Historic Preservation Commission at Large, Jordan Selagren to the Historic Preservation Commission Brown Street, Christina Willough Reynolds, Historic Preservation Commission Summit Street, Nicole Villa Neweva, Housing and Community Development Commission, Mary Ann Dennis, Jennifer Haley, and Zachary Slocum. Library Board of Trustees, John Rayburn. And Planning and Zoning Commission, Maggie Elliott. So can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, Taylor.
Moved by Weiner, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We made it through. All right. We are at item number 13, Announcement of Vacancies New. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Climate Action Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2023. Correspondence included in council packet. Human Rights Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2023. Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through December 31, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 5, 2022. Can I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Taylor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number 14 is Announcements of Vacancies Previous. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through April 7, 2025. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 31, 2022. Senior Center Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 14, 2022. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, Iowa City Representative, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, East College Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. And we're at item number 15, which is City Council Information. So any upcoming events, meetings, anything you've attended?
Upcoming, we're doing the Public Works Open House is this Saturday and we're doing a series of rolling council forums.
Yes.
Will you be on roller skates?
You can do that.
So, yeah, that would be nice.
Can't tell whether you're serious.
The one time I've had a cast was from roller skating.
Uh-oh.
So no wheels on this guy.
Are we supposed to take questions while we're skating?
Yeah. Actually, I also have, I don't bet more than myself are going, but the downtown district is having their annual meeting on Thursday, right? So that should be cool. It's going to be in the, at the Chauncey Park. And then, little bit of a plug because my girl is doing it, but it's also, it is an amazing community event. The Girls on the Run are having their 5K on Sunday at, oh my gosh, now I'm blanking, on the park, I can see it. It's our wonderful new park down by Big Grove. Thank you, thank you, Riverfront Crossing. That's the beginning of it, at 11:30. So, anyway, it's going to be a big weekend. Roller skating, run jogging.
And the farmer's market's been great so far.
Yes.
Very well attended.
I had an opportunity over the weekend to see the Red Cedar Chaper Music Quartet, I believe, at least that's how they were playing that night. They are an outstanding entity of music. They were accompanying silent films from the Britton collection, which is also a fascinating body of work and that combination, which I, after, we saw them in Cedar Rapids, we watched the Saving Britton film, the documentary, which came out four, maybe four years ago, which is a wonderful expression of things Iowa. I mean, it's really a remarkable film, very inspiring. And they played in that documentary as well, so it was sort of interesting to see them there. But I highly recommend them, they're really fine, fine musical group.
Tomorrow, we have our 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM strategic planning.
9:30?
9:30.
Oh, 9:30, oh, extra 30 minutes, perfect. I had it to be there and die for myself, because I won't be late. All right, so we have a little homework for that and there's a lot of opportunity for us to really great, set a nice vision for our community. If no more comments, we will go to reports from the City Manager's Office.
Just real quick on the Public Works Open House, I had previously communicated to you that we were going to do a ribbon cutting for the, for the building at 12:30. We decided to scrap those plans. There's just so much on the agenda that we didn't think we could, we could do it justice and do it the right way. So we're not going to do the building ribbon cutting, so don't plan your day around that necessarily. If you can stop by anytime between 8:00 and 5:00, that would be fantastic. We'll have all kinds of activities and vehicles on display for you.
Yep. And there'll be listening sessions from, I think it's 9:00 to 11:00.
I'm doing 9:00. 9:10, 30.
9:10, 30. There's going to be a Mayor Pro Tem Alter, and then I'm doing 12:00 to 2:00. And then we have Counselor Weiner doing 3:30 to 5:00. Yes.
And you get to engage with a four-year-old at the same time.
Yes. All right, we're going to go on to our City Attorney's Office.
Nothing for me today, thank you, Mayor.
All right. And what about the City Clerk?
For me.
Great. Item number 17.
Bedman?
We're now doing, like, City Manager's Office.
Okay.
We're going to shave these meeting times down.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where the problem was.
So he'll still get his comments in when he has some.
Right.
He's not short of words, if you ever had that one-on-one with them. All right, item number 17, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Taylor.
Second.
All right, I'm going to give, moved by Taylor, seconded by Weiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned for the evening. Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned for the evening.